... and the greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I am saying allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan. Here. Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddi.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone, and I am attending remotely due to a medical condition.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
Thirteen present to absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Walton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So, I wanted to apologize for missing our last meeting, but I had COVID at the time, so I didn't think it was wise to come. But I see you've made progress, and so that's good. But I wanted to mention a few things, Madam President. First, a couple of the directors will be here to tell you a little bit about a couple of things during the public comment period. First, Bobby Bagley will be here to discuss R-23083, which is a grant acceptance, which as a result of the need to act quickly, she's going to ask for action on tonight, but again, it is a grant acceptance involving no city money. Number two, Matt Sullivan, of course, community development, will be talking with you to describe some service cutbacks on a couple of the routes or a few of the routes of the bus system, which are going to be necessary as a result, and they're temporary, but a result of the fact that we need, there's not enough money to continue to operate them, at least for the time being. But on other issues, Madam President, I wanted to mention the fact that the, our local, our city team who's been working on the Mohawk Tannery, Tim Cummings, Matt Sullivan, I know gave you a presentation regarding the Mohawk Tannery. Those who've been around for a while remember what a noxious environmental problem this was. I was just talking to someone today who lived up on Denise Street, and he said, he grew up up there. He said he could, this thing, you could smell it all over Little Florida, you could smell it even up on Denise Street, he said, when he was a kid. Anyway, it closed in 1984, leaving these lagoons of deposits of tannery sludge. So, the EPA, the state is somewhat involved, and private developers, and of course, the city have been talking about this cleanup for several years now, and there've been detailed negotiations over the arrangements. You already heard the details, one though, that I definitely wanted to reiterate, and you will be hearing more about this in the committee, and obviously, we'll have to make the decision, but the question that I've always had is like, well, what happens if the cost of the cleanup goes over the estimated amount, which, you know, is thirteen or fourteen million dollars? And we did, at one point, have an engineer, our engineer, our landfill engineer, look at this thing, and, you know, he said it could go higher than that. Now, the EPA is saying, and this, I think, is very important, that they will cover the cost if it goes over the estimate. And the other thing they're saying is that they do not and will not participate unless there's a private development, that it's a public-private partnership. They will not pay for just a flat cleanup, and this is, has been their position from the beginning, as a result of, it started during the Trump administration, really, and the then EPA director wanted public-private partnerships, and that's what they began with, and that's, you know, what they're going to insist on. So, in any event, I think you, this has been a terrible, you know, it's been a significant environmental problem for thirty-nine years, since the place closed, and hopefully, this will result in a cleanup and a productive use of that property. I did, I can't help it, but return, Madam President, to rail the derailing, pardon the pun, of the Capitol Corridor project by the executive council. I recently went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Washington, and they talk about a lot of different issues, but one of them is they had a panel, you know, one of these roundtable panel seminar things on rail. And we, you know, and chaired by the mayor of Normal, Illinois, and the mayor of Salt Lake City, various rail projects were discussed, and in other parts of the country, rail projects are being advanced, for example, in Utah and Idaho, on a non, on a bipartisan basis. I mean, both parties see this as infrastructure improvements which are important to the economies of their regions. Idaho and Utah, very red states, they're advancing a north-south project. Texas, Virginia, this is happening all over the country. But for some reason, here in New Hampshire, and the other point that was made by the director of the Federal Rail Administration and by the director of Amtrak, unprecedented amounts of federal money to make, to complete rail projects right now, unprecedented amounts. And yet, we have three executive counselors, and for whatever reason, I don't get why the Republicans in the legislature and the executive council are so adamantly opposed to this, but they cut off the funding of the final planning, even though it doesn't cost the state any money. I mean, they've already spent ninety percent of the money, there's no state money involved. Let's at least see what the final planning shows us. It's, I just don't get why here, here, one place in the country where one group of people just can't understand that these are important infrastructure projects that will yield significant economic benefits. The polling in our town, in our city, supports that entirely, and then polling across the state, it's like seventy-five percent, support a rail, commuter rail project. Like, I don't get it. But unfortunately, I think we have to look for another way to try to at least complete this planning, so we can see what this could look like. You know, it's only, it's, they're ninety percent of the way there, a lot of the work is already done. State DOT is telling us that, you know, they have no problem handing over whatever has been done to whoever wants to pick it up. AECOM is involved, so I don't think we should just walk away from this because three people in the state of New Hampshire, on a three-to-two vote, have decided that they want to try to stop this project. Finally, I did want to mention, Madam President, the resolution, which will go to committee, but which essentially, and the number is R-23082, which essentially would, it recommends, if, and would if adopted, authorize the city to enter into the CPCNH, meaning Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, we're already part of it, but begin to commit to, it would result in the commitment of the city to enter the purchase of electricity on behalf of all customers of the default carrier, which is Eversource, and thereby seek to achieve lower electric rates for Nashua customers. This is something authorized by the legislature. We have a aggregation, so-called aggregation committee here in the city, consisting of Frank Tees, of Larry Lutton, President Wiltshire, Doria Brown, myself, although I could not be at this meeting because I was away in, at this conference. They have recommended unanimously that we proceed with CPCNH, and, and with the objective of purchasing power at different times than Eversource does. We know that Eversource is now charging customers twenty-two cents a kilowatt. It seems realistic that a lower price can be obtained through this approach, and you will hear a lot of detail, much more than I can give you now, in the committee process as to how that could be accomplished, but a very interesting and potentially very beneficial piece of legislation for the residents, the electric consumers here in our city. So, please, when that comes up for a hearing, try to attend, and so you can hear all of the details. And that, Madam President, is all that I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. The one thing I just want to say is, is as far as the Mohawk Tannery goes, I know we're all, already seeing, you know, right-to-no requests on everything that's been talked about with the Mohawk Tannery, we're seeing opposition already spouting online, so I always want to make sure that we're very transparent on the process going forward, and any information that we have, we're not, you know, not, not releasing it, I should say, because it is a big deal, and it's an important thing, and I think it's a good thing, and I think we're going to need to do this, but I think people will, will start to put opposition out there for it, and I, you know, it's, it's too good an opportunity to get shot down by certain things, so I want to make sure that we're very clear, and we're very open about it to the public. That's all.
Anyone else on this side? Alderman Lopez.
I just had a question to the mayor. In response to your comments about commuter rail, we had a presentation here by Boston Surface Rail, which essentially wouldn't necessarily require the inclusion of the rest of the state. Has there been any communication from them or updates from them on that project?
So, for those who weren't here at the time, Boston Surface Rail was a private company seeking to establish an entirely private service on a more limited basis than a state project would entail, fewer runs, a lot fewer runs. They had an ambitious pro, you know, agenda, or were very ambitious about what they wanted to accomplish, but they were trying to do it elsewhere, in New England as well, but they ended up going bankrupt. So, they're no longer in the picture, and they never really accomplished any private rail project anywhere. The DOT is saying, in this project, that their work suggests that this project could operate on a great, breakeven basis or better. In other words, and that's the Capitol Corridor project, in other words, once the rail is improved, and that rail is already there, but once it is improved, and the rail stock is required, the additional cars and the engines, that they believe that the ridership would be sufficient, and the revenue would be sufficient to operate the system on a long-term basis without any subsidy. That's what DOT is saying. That's New Hampshire DOT. So, all that's, assuming they're correct, all that's required is, and it's not a small amount of money, but all that's required is the capital investment to improve the tracks and acquire the necessary equipment. In terms of rail projects, this is a small amount of money. I mean, yes, it is five hundred million dollars or so, payable, payable over thirty years or whatever, but compared with other rail projects across the country, this is a small project, and would, with the interest, I think that Secretary Buttigieg has already shown in this thing, I mean, he hasn't committed, but he's come up here to talk about it, Secretary of Transportation, with that level of interest, that the chances of getting funded would be very good, if we could ever get the state off the dime. So, yes, the state would have to contribute something, but it's a, potentially, a very successful project that's being killed. Anyway, I think that, I went a little bit beyond, but Boston Surface Rail did go out of business.
My understanding is this is the only way to go forward now, because Boston Surface Rail isn't an option.
Correct.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm sorry, Madam President, I apologize. Two comments. One is, just to remind those that are opposed to the Mohawk, and, and I'm glad that Alderman from Ward Eight commented about being transparent. I think we are transparent, I think we have been transparent, and I think we will be transparent going forward, but those that are opposed, if this gets stopped, like the last one's had, and so on, it means that this sludge is sitting there in these lagoons in what is called a hundred-year flood guarantee at this moment. This change will bring it to a five-hundred year, and we've seen a few hundred-year floods in the last few years. So, you know, be careful what you keep opposing, and, and so on, and, and putting up opposition. I tell that to my, my ward as well. Be very cautious on that. The other thing in, in comments to the, the rail, it's very frustrating, I'm not up in Concord anymore, so I, I have, my heart goes up to Alderman O'Brien relative to that. It's, it's a fight that's very difficult up there. I don't know why, it's hard not to take it personally, meaning that you're hurting Nashua, and why would you do this? The comments that I've heard up there, Mr. Mayor, is that, well, the, the state is going to have to pick it up, but we know that that's not the case. We know that there's a lot of toll credits, I believe, is what can be used for a lot of this, this stuff, and so on, but it, it's a language they'd like to, to throw out there. I, I wish more people here in the city and in the surrounding communities would be contacting Concord and saying how upset they are. We know by, by doing surveys that people want this and so on, but they've got to make it very vocal up there. It keeps, get it put in the ten-year plan, and then it gets pulled out of the ten-year plan. I was quite disturbed to see this by the executive councils up there, and again, I have to say, it's hard not to take it personally. I think that it's, it's, it's just painful. It's painful to see this fight go on. It would be wonderful to do that. The Boston Rail Serv, the Boston Surface Rail, their, their plan was very unique, and then they kept saying they'd be here in, in Nashua, and then they were going to have a stop in Bedford, and, and it was going back and forth, you just knew that was doomed to, to fail, because they kept going back and forth, and I want to, to, Madam President, and the, the Electric Aggregation Committee, I just want to thank them for all the hard work that they've done, and I hope that we can pass that plan, too. So, thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for a point of clarification, Mayor Donches, and I, I made this note, and I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, that if the cleanup for Mohawk, the amount that's forecasted slash budgeted, if it goes over that amount, the EPA will pick up the difference?
That's what they're telling us, yes. And we've, we've raised that question, you know, over the years, that this has been discussed with them, and, you know, I don't, it's three, four years this has been in discussion, and we raised this from the beginning, we had our engineers look at the project, we've told them that we think it's possible that it would go over, they're aware of that, and they are telling us that they will make up the difference. Because what we don't want is to be stuck holding this thing if the, you know, if the amounts that we're discussing, that they're discussing, that everybody's agreeing to, if the project goes ahead, we're not enough, and we don't want to be stuck with a half-completed cleanup. So, you know, but I'm sure during the, I believe during the, you know, maybe they'll show up and reiterate that, I don't know if they're going to come to the committee meetings or not, but, I mean, we've met with them and discussed this a number of times. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular Board of Alderman meetings of November ninth, November twenty-second, and December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Charles A. Hall, Chairman, Nashua Skating Center Corp, regarding follow-up to proposed skating rink at the site of Elm Street Junior High. Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Lecter, regarding purchase of police department anal control vehicle. Communication has been received from Dan Healy, City Clerk, regarding special election dates to fill vacancy in Hillsborough County State Representative District Number Three.
There being no objection.
Madam President, I do have a clarifying question, if I can.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the first communication, it could probably be answered by Mr. Mayor. The letter that was sent in talks about a conversation that you had, was that just with Mr. Hall, or was that with the full commission?
Um, Mr. Ha, Mr. Hall, I think he called me, but, I think he called me, but I might have called him, I forget how that happened, but, yeah, it was just, he, his point was, look, you know, there wasn't, there, the employees are very enthusiastic about the work they do there, and, you know, for good reason, and sometimes, you know, employees get overly enthusiastic, and there was one person who sent something saying that, you know, they objected to Revere undertaking this project, and that, but the board, you know, wasn't, understood where Revere is, and, you know, they weren't, that wasn't really their position, and, you know, they'd love it if the city were to tear down the Public Works Garage, so they could build a second sheet, but I keep saying, you know, we don't have sixty million dollars right now, which is basically what it would cost. So, we, we'd love to do it, but we don't have the money. So, if someone gave us sixty million, we'd be happy, but that has, not, not happening. So, anyway, so, he said, well, I'm going to write a letter to make it clear, and that's how this came about.
Excellent, thank you. It just, I mean, still in the hockey community, hear a lot of rumors about this whole project have kind of ended up being thrown in the middle of it, so just wanted to answer that clarifying question. Thank you.
Alderman Como.
No, but I, but I think their committee met together, but I didn't meet with them.
Sure. Thank you.
Alderman Como.
Madam President, just to add on to that real quick, after the email was sent to us from the, the woman from Conway, my colleague from Ward Nine and I went, were invited down there to speak with them, and they did make it clear to us that she sent that not as a representative of Conway, but just as a private citizen of Nashua, and it wasn't representative of the views of Conway as a whole, so just, so that that's clear for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make a motion to accept the communications and place them on file. There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I know we have Director Bagley and Director Sullivan here, is, did you want to come up now and speak about your legislation?
I can speak. I can speak, yeah, Madam President.
Okay. Director Bagley.
Bobby Bagley, Director for the Division of Public Health and Community Services. It's good to see everybody. Happy New Year's. My first time seeing you all since we're still in January, I can still say Happy New Year. So, the item that is on the agenda for this evening, R-23083, is, this is for an acceptance of grant funds, which is an amendment to the contract that we already have. This will be an amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. This is actually funding, the First Amendment is for emergency preparedness, and it's in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and this is money that is going to be rolled over from last year, because the state had intended to provide us with this funding, but they needed to put it into an amendment. And the second amount for COVID health disparities, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six, is additional funding that the state received, and they wanted to award that to an approved contract amount of fifteen thousand, and this is help, to help support the community health workers that we already have hired, but fifteen thousand dollars buys you nothing, so they had the funding to add the one hundred and thirty-nine thousand to this. So, the amendment is to support the existing services that we currently have.
Thank you.
And, can I just add?
Oh, yeah.
So, the reason that I was asking for a first and second read this evening is because they're trying to get this on the Governor's and Council agenda, to get this passed tonight, so they can get it on the agenda next week. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Period for public comment. Anyone else that wants to, no one else has signed up? I see Karen Smith, Brian Soika, you're good? Okay. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Greenman Peterson.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve a contract amendment to GPI Greenman Peterson, Inc., and a contract extension date from June thirty, twenty-twenty-two, to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, to approve assistance to NTS for construction phase services, resident engineering, architect support, inspection and construction administration services for the Transit Center retrofit project in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five and ninety-three cents. Funding will be through Department one-eight-six Transportation Fund five-four-one-two-zero Construction Services slash FTA Grant Funds.
Okay, we.
By roll call.
By roll call, thank you. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions? Thirteen.
Sorry, thirteen.
Okay, thirteen, okay. Petitions?
None.
Nomination, appointments, and elections?
Lindsay N. Robinson, new appointment, term to expire January tenth, twenty-twenty-six, Main Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, zero-three, zero-six-one. Michael J. Tabasco, new appointment, term to expire January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six, Five Federal Hill Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero-three, zero-six-two.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read, and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the November sixteenth, December twenty-first, and January fourth, twenty-twenty-three, finance committees be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three, Penetrach Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November first, twenty-twenty-two, Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-22-077 regarding the care and control of Nine Riverside Street.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22077 by roll call, I'd like to speak with briefly.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, this is in keeping with our charter, so the BPW is moving out into their new building, and will be soon getting legislation to allow them to manage that building, and this is to allow for the police department to take over this building and manage it, as was described by the Chief of Police during the committee meeting.
You've all heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. That motion carries, and Resolution 2277 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-22-078, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2023 relative to the Community Development Block Room CDBG.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I'd like to recommend, uh, final passage for R-22078 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R-2278. Is there discussion on that motion? I will not be voting on this. I believe this affects my employer. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleat.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Seventeen.
Twelve yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries, and R-2278 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-080 regarding the care and control of school building properties.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22080 by roll call. I'd like to speak with briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, again, this is an administrative item. Uh, we have started the work on Main Doswell of Birch Hill, and the state requires that we say that we're going to maintain that building as a school for at least 50 years. And, and it's much like when we do things with the airport, and they need a 99-year lease. Uh, so this is to allow us to submit pay applications to the state to pay for the state's part of the project.
We've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a clarifying question. I was reading through the, uh, resolution, and it says, "Resolution confirms that acknowledges existing city charter, et cetera, et cetera." My question is, we need to pass legislation to confirm what's already in the charter? That was my question. I read it as, we already have legislation saying that we have control over school property, but we have to pass an additional legislation.
The RSA, what you're talking about on the charter is that the, the, uh, school department has control, and the city have control over the school buildings. What this is saying is they're giving us money for two specific schools, and they want us to ensure that we're going to keep those open for at least 50 years, which, by the way, is, is a shorter period than most, than all of our other schools. Even the ones that we've closed, we're open for longer than 50 years. And we're rebuilding these two schools. Obviously, we're not going to be closing them anytime soon. So this is, uh, to, uh, when the state gives us the, the monies under this, under their rules, they just want us to say, yes, uh, we know you control the schools, but you're going to keep it open for 50 years because we're going to give you all this money to rebuild the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleat.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2280 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-081 authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a contract with ATA Outdoor Media for Transit Advertising Services.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-22-081 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few questions around this contract. I did watch the Finance Committee meeting from 18 January, and I just had a few questions, um, about, um, this company, and I know that this is a new contract with, uh, a new company. Who was the prior company and why did we decide to part ways with them? I didn't know if there was anybody that could.
Matt Sullivan.
Matt Sullivan's very on top of this. So if you, if he could address that, Madam President?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director. A, a very appropriate question, and one that I actually had thought had come up at the committee meeting, but I don't think it did directly. Uh, as it turned out when we actually went out for new proposals for the contract, the existing contractor did not submit a new proposal for the contract. Uh, frankly, that, I don't think there was any specific reason for that. We actually had a very productive relationship working with them. Uh, that's sort of how the path went. I will say that the, uh, proposal to bring on ATA Outdoor Advising, Advertising, they were, they were actually the city's contractor prior to our, uh, existing partner, Fuel Media, so we have a level, level of familiarity with them. But, uh, the existing contractor did not rebid the project.
Okay. Follow-up, please?
Mm-hmm.
In the con, thank you. In the contract, it says, "The city gets a minimum amount in year one of 21,000," et cetera, et cetera, as the year escalates as it goes on. But then earlier in the contract, it says, "There's a 60/40 split of gross revenue." I think in the committee meeting, you said that we get 21,000, and that represents 60%? Or, could you explain that, please?
Madam President, if I may, the, the 21,000 is a minimum payment of revenue to the city of, uh, independent of that, though, there's a 60/40 split, assuming an exceeding number beyond that. In the event, for example, that the transit contractor collected $100,000 in revenue, we would obviously receive 60% of that, them receiving 40%. That 21, and the according, or the, the additional 36, 48, 50, 50, those are minimum thresholds for revenue to be distributed to the city.
Okay. One more question.
You bet.
Thank you. How, uh, two, three-year revenue history on advertising on buses for the city? I couldn't find it anywhere in the, in the budget, so I was just curious about what that number is.
Be happy to address that. Uh, it's interesting. We should not look at the last three years because they've been a very challenging, uh, environment for transit advertising. Uh, this has been a, a bit of a moving target for us. But, um, I should note that, uh, as part of a prior contract iteration with a, a different entity, we actually had to adjust the revenue expectations and the minimum revenues because of COVID. Uh, and so we had to drop these thresholds below even what you see here with this new contractor. Um, looking back at the budget figures, and I assume this question may come up this evening, uh, we ranged anywhere between about 40 to $50,000 in revenue in recent years. In years precedent to COVID, the numbers were higher than that. But it is somewhat entity-specific in who our partner is in the contract. Uh, but there has been volatility associated with the general economic market as well. Um, and so while we're confident in the minimums that are presented in the contract, should some significant, you know, worldwide economic recession, uh, take its hold, it is possible that there could be an adjustment needed. But these are intended to be reasonable expectations of revenue.
Got it. Thanks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Kelly, did you have a question?
Uh, I was just going to say pretty much what Director Sullivan said. As someone who works in the industry and has, uh, placed advertising in transit, the last two years were, are not a good measure for, um, for revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleat.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2281 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
First reading of R-23-082 authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Kelly. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cleat. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Tebow. Given it's first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-23-083 relative to the acceptance of grant funds pursuant to contract amendment number one in the amount of $158,574 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community service grant activities.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cleat. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Tebow and myself.
Alderman Kelly.
Alderman Kelly, sorry. Um, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of R-23-083 by roll call. May I speak to this amendment?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is very rarely that the board does something like this. It's usually when matters are very timely, and this does affect our, uh, Health Department. So I hope my fellow Alderman will support the motion to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Through the, um, President to Attorney Bolton, um, we don't have to have any kind of special public hearings for this because it's been amended, correct?
You don't have to have any special public hearing for this, no.
Okay. Um, I, I would just want to express that I, I think the manner in which this was approached is a little bit unfortunate. Um, the Human Affairs Committee has been willing in the past to review pending legislation. In fact, we had legislation that the, the Public Health Department indicated needed to be passed with a, a second reading last year, and we were willing to review it in committee before it came to the board so that at least the committee members who were on the board and anyone interested would be able to have a, a question and answer, um, period, and, and review it. So we probably could have done that last week. It sounds like this is a rapidly unfolding situation, but there was enough time for at least the, the concept of it to be brought to us, even if there wasn't formal legislation in place. Um, and I would also want to point out that the Human Affairs Committee is pretty flexible in its membership, and we are willing to meet under short notice. Um, we talked about this at last week's meeting, um, with regards to CDBG, but per, uh, Director Bagley's report, trying to get everybody to meet before next week would have been a little bit of a stretch, even if it was just for an informational, um, kind of presentation. And there have been a number of situations where additional money has been allowed by the state of New Hampshire, while the state of New Hampshire has also asked us to kind of march to their tune and move to their beat. So we're typically, as a city and the Public Health Department, uh, as a department, it's pretty nimble in those kind of situations, recognizing that being able to deliver the services is key, and we are more organized than the state is on virtually every scenario that they've brought to us. So I don't necessarily see this as anything out of the ordinary. I would just, I would just express that as a committee, we probably would have reviewed this under slightly different circumstances, and it seems like the best thing to do is to move forward with giving it a second reading.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Anything further? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleat.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
All, uh, that motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, uh, now make the motion for final passage of R-23-083 by roll call. May I speak briefly to the motion?
We have to have the second reading before we make.
Oh, excuse me. I have a little ahead of the game.
Second reading of R-23-083 relative to the acceptance of grant funds pursuant to contract amendment number one in the amount of $158,574 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I got a little excited there, Madam President. Uh, I would allow, I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-23-083 by roll call. And may I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, Madam President, and I'm sure every single member of this board recognizes the fine work of the Human Affairs Committee, but it, again, in listening to, uh, Director Bagley, this, uh, matter has some timeliness to it, so I urge you to support this to the betterment of receiving $158,574, uh, into our Public Health Department. Thank you.
Discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleat.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2283 is declared duly adopted. New business ordinances?
None.
Period for general public comment. Matt Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director for the record. Uh, I wanted to speak under this portion of the agenda rather than the beginning because this is not a specific, uh, piece of information related to legislation. But I did just want to take a moment to address, uh, some of the mayor's comments related to recent transit route cancellations as part of the Nashua Transit System, um, and, and more accurately, temporary suspensions that have been put in place by NTS until the end of March. I just want to start by thanking our riders specifically for their patience and understanding. It doesn't go quite far enough, obviously, because this has been a, a life-altering change for many folks, not only during the weekdays, but on Saturdays as well. Um, and we're working through that disruption as best we can in partnership with our contracting entity, First Transit. But really, the riders have been bearing the brunt of this. And I want to thank those of you who have reached out and those that will, will reach out, uh, to connect constituents that you may have that are concerned about these service interruptions, and we certainly appreciate and will do our best to address those. Um, again, I want to emphasize these are temporary modifications in nature, but just to review what these entail, uh, Monday through Friday, the following route modifications are in place as of yesterday. There will be no Route Two in place, which is primarily an Amherst Street route but touches other areas. Route Two A will continue to be provided. There'll be no Routes Three, Five, and then no central route in the evening and no on-demand van. And that's Monday through Friday. And again, I'm happy to review these in detail with any member of the board after the meeting if you'd so, so approve or allow. On Saturdays, we'll be offering three modified routes that are, uh, sort of a, a, a hybrid of some of our existing routes throughout the day, albeit under modified hours of operation. And all of this is being done, uh, really because of, uh, uh, really a bus shortage, more than, uh, the mayor sort of touched on it. It is a financial issue, but it's not that Nashua Transit is not financially viable. It's actually that bus drivers are very hard to come by, particularly at the rates that we're able to offer right now. But we are working towards a solution on this, and so I want to emphasize this is temporary, and we will be coming back to, to propose some form of solution to address this, although we know the period in the interim will be very challenging. I, I also want to point out that our, uh, primary objective in these route modifications was to ensure that all stops continue to be provided for, albeit with a different level of frequency of the routes that are actually getting to those stops. We've been relatively successful with that, but there are some stops where with that, but there are some stops where folks will have to walk to alternative transit stops in order to grab the bus that they normally would take. All of our ride guides and maps will be updated this week. Our timing was not perfect there, but we had to sort of move quickly when it came to these suspensions. We know that folks rely upon those two pieces of information, the ride guide and the map, and so those will be released this week so that the public has the most accurate information. We're also doing a level of outreach we haven't really done with a temporary suspension like this, both at the transit center on weekends and during the week. And we'll also be holding two public meetings, one of which is tomorrow at 9:00 AM in Route 208, Room 208, rather, to speak to the public and collect input. We're also offering a Zoom option. And then on February 14th, we'll be offering a meeting at 3:00 PM in Room 208 to talk in server group format to the public as well. But again, we'll be doing ongoing outreach throughout that. If there are any questions, please just do not hesitate to reach out to me, to Camille Corre, the Transit Administrator, or to call us at 603-880-0100, or to email us at NTSfeedback@nashua.gov. Again, we recognize the implications of these routes, and we're working diligently to try to resolve this as soon as possible. And I'll be back before you hopefully to talk about what that solution actually looks like. But we appreciate your patience and understanding during this very difficult time for particularly our riders in the community. If I could just finish very briefly, switching to a different topic on the agenda this evening, I did just want to encourage everyone relative to R-23-082, which is the Community Power Coalition Resolution. There'll be sort of a unique finance presentation or presentation at the Finance Committee meeting that Doria Brown is planning to some extent, bringing in members and subject matter experts specifically from Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire to offer some insight into what this means for the City of Nashua and to answer any questions that members of the board might have, because we do recognize this is a very complex issue. So I would just encourage you to attend that meeting, or of course, reach out to Doria Brown if you have any questions about anything related to that resolution and that legislative action in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. Alderman Lopez?
Before Director Sullivan goes, could you clarify whether or not paratransit is active on Saturday?
Paratransit will be active during the Saturday core hours, but not obviously in the evening hours when the service has been truncated. And Alderman Lopez, if I may, I do want to confirm that with you. So after the meeting, I'll connect with you, and I can certainly issue a clarifying comment. But my understanding is that paratransit will be offered during the core hours of the day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So that the public knows, they already had some questions about the the Power Coalition Resolution.
Sure.
So that the public knows, do you know which Finance Committee meeting this is going to be presented at, the presentation's going to occur?
I actually do. Alderman Jettie, I do not know as of this point in time, but we can work to ensure that information is shared through all of our traditional methods. But I do not know exactly which Finance Committee meeting this will be scheduled for at this point in time. Ms. Graham is telling me next week, but we'll confirm the date.
The next meeting, I believe, is February 1st. And I assume they would come in at that point, but I guess we have to confirm with Community Power people.
We can work to confirm that.
Yeah.
Alderman Cleed.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to thank Director Sullivan for putting up with my phone calls over the weekend and calling me back. I truly did appreciate that, all the help that you gave me from Friday right into Sunday. One of the things that I just wanted to comment is that there's a misconception that these drivers or city employees and the city isn't paying them enough, et cetera. This is all part of a contract. Could you just not give a lot of detail, but just a slight for the public that are listening?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Madam President, to answer to the question being posed, so we are, we do have a unique situation in that we have a small administrative staff that are city employees associated with Nashua Transit. But the contractor that you really see driving the buses and operating the service is an entity known as First Transit. They have been a longtime city partner. And while we are independent entities, we work collaboratively on pretty much everything involved with the transit planning and operation. However, when it comes to the drivers themselves, they are actually part of the First Transit contract remit, and therefore, there is some complexity when it comes to how wages are paid, what wages look like. We have some contractual obligations, and there are contractual constraints. But that also gives us, you know, some flexibility when it comes to modifications to wages and other things as well. But it's a complicated, but has been a very productive relationship for many, many years that we hope to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Sullivan.
I love snow. However, many people in Nashua do not. And hats off, and many thanks to the plow drivers of Nashua's Department of Public Works for keeping the roads clear and not that slippery. I know we have more snow on the way, and I just wanted to give them a quick acknowledgement of thanks for what they do.
Alderman Cleed.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just kind of echo again what Director Sullivan said about the meeting tomorrow at 9 o'clock for the NTS. If you go onto the NTS, the city's website, and look at the Nashua Transit System, and that's what NTS stands for, you'll see the link in the announcement and so on to Zoom for those who don't want to come out tomorrow. I plan on being at that meeting. And I did thank Director Sullivan. He has been very helpful. And I know that if given the chance to have done something differently, maybe we would have had more of a heads up, but it is what it is. And I do think that Director Sullivan and staff and so on have been trying to do what they can. I spoke to him over the weekend, and there was a specific person that had called me with questions, and he or one of his staff members had reached out to that person to try to help them. They may not be able to do the changes that you want, but they're willing to listen and see what they can do. So I do tell people to call the 603-886-0100 number if they have any questions. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
So first, I want to remind members of Ward Four or constituents of Ward Four that we are planning to have a Mayor's Town Hall tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Led Street, assuming the mayor can attend and there's no wind.
Well, I'm planning on it since I called it.
Planning on it. So we'll see how the mayor's plans work out. And then Monday, we are organizing a crime watch meeting at Caribbean Breeze at 8:00 AM to talk about different circumstances that are happening on Main Street. National Media will present on different kind of interactions that they have. We'll also have a couple of the community agencies there that do outreach there to talk about their services, who can support different needs that you see if you don't feel like it's necessarily a law enforcement issue. Again, that's 8:00 AM on Monday, January 30th, at Caribbean Breeze. Thank you.
Who else? Alderman? Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo the comments from my colleague from Ward Nine. I also love snow. I particularly like it when it falls a couple hours to our north on ski slopes. But I'd like to address a couple of my snow-related pet peeves, since I have a moment. The first being, Jessica's Law requires that people clear all of the snow off of their cars, and I can't tell you how many cars I've seen over the last couple of days with the littlest piece of the windshield cleared off. And I don't understand how you can possibly drive safely like that, so please clear off your car before you drive it around. Also, particularly in the downtown areas that have some street parking, if you're parked on the street and the plow kind of ploughed your car in, when you dig your car out, try not to just dig out the minimum and leave like massive piles of ice around in those parking spots because it makes it difficult for other people trying to get around. And also, if you are physically capable and you're willing, please take a moment to clear out a fire hydrant or two while you're out doing the sidewalks because that greatly helps out Nashua Fire. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple things. First, I want to thank the DPW, especially Lauren Byers, who helped me with a resident this weekend going into Monday. And I, to their points, they've done a great job over the last couple of days. There's been so many outages around the state, and I think Nash was 0.5% for power outages. So the people that are working in the state to get the snow cleared off or in the city have done a great job. Secondly, Spyglass Brewery is opening, having a ribbon cutting on Saturday at 1:00. That's in my ward behind the Sheridan. Very proud of having another business, especially Spyglass. They do a great job. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody over the last couple of weeks that have reached out to me either personally or through email or through cards or, and especially Alderwoman Timmons, who her and Linda Harriet Gathright were nice enough to attend Temple with us that night for my sister-in-law who had passed away at 61. So it's just too young to go, and it's been a tough month for my wife and for our whole family. It wasn't a great, you know, Christmas break. So I appreciate everybody that's reached out. It's appreciated, and, you know, everybody knows when you go through these things, how much support you need from family, friends, coworkers, and I certainly appreciate it. So thank you.
Madam President?
Mayor Donches.
Now, my understanding is that Spyglass is at 11:30.
Oh, is it 11:30?
But maybe we should get together and confirm what it is.
Yeah, you might be right on that. I have to look at the email I got from Ms. Palmer.
Okay. I mean, I think it goes for a while, but I think the actual ceremony, it goes till midnight, but.
Yeah, 11:30 is good.
But I believe the actual ceremony may be at 11:30.
All right, I'm ready.
Why not start at 6:00 AM?
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, Thursday, there'll be a joint meeting of Infrastructure and BPW. This coincides with the project that's going on at the City Landfill. The meeting will be held here in the Alderman's Chamber at 3:00 PM. I'm going to ask Alderman Dowd if he may share it with the current weather conditions. It cuts down on my land speed record as far as traveling from Conca back, so to do it safely. So if you could handle that for me, that would be great. And then to the Infrastructure Committee, and also to join P E D C. I don't know what we're going to do, but please keep February 7th open. We're working on a date at that particular time. So that seems to be the two things that are popping up. Thank you.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Joint Special School Building Committee this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Nashua North.
Any others? I'd just like to wish Alderwoman Kelly a speedy recovery. And that's all I have. Do we have a motion, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the January 24th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned and by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleed.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alden Tebow.
Yes.
Alden Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you, everyone.